The hour of 1:45 having arrived, the Santa Cruz City Council has completed its work in closed session and the council is back in session, but the clerk will call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro?
Present.
Brunner?
Present.
Newsom?
Present.
Golda?
Here.
O'Hara?
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Present.
Mayor Keely?
Present. A quorum having been established, we're on oral communication. This will be the opportunity for anyone to address the city council on a member on an item under our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda for a period of time not to exceed two minutes. We will, in the event that we have people both here in chambers as well as online, we will alternate back and forth between the two. At this point, we will take the first person in line. Good afternoon and welcome to the council meeting.
Good morning. My name is Michael Spataforo, business owner in the Shebright neighborhood. Too bad the city manager walked out. But so I don't know if any of you guys have walked down and checked out the project and seen that we have 15 people working on a daily basis. I mean, for a couple of weeks there, at the beginning of September, we had, you had like 18 people, you had three, plus three spotters. The harbor had five guys working on it, but still, we only have so many days of working in water. If you guys, there hasn't been any in-water pile driving now for about three weeks. So if we maybe would have worked longer hours and on Saturdays, we would have been able to cut down the five-month shutdown we're going to have of the complete bridge next summer and try to get ahead of the game. I appreciate the email I got back saying we're on target, but after six months, maybe we could have picked up a week. So I don't know if you guys ever been to Tahoe, North Lake Tahoe, Tahoe City, there's a bridge called Fanny Bridge. It's called Fanny Bridge because everybody looks over the bridge and see all their butts. And as they're looking over the bridge, they're looking at these big cutthroat trout, rainbow trout. So they have, that bridge is 150 feet long. They knocked, they started knocking down that, they had, it's the head of the Truckee River watershed. So they started knocking down the bridge October 15th. The bridge will be completed and be 60 feet wider by November 3rd. So less than three months, they will have completed that bridge. Arguably, it is as sensitive as an area as the harbor because all those large fish, and it's the head of the Truckee River. So, you know, and they have people working on both sides of the bridge. Instead of just one side of the bridge, they have multiple trucks, multiple cranes and things like that expedite in a process. So too bad we couldn't have done the same thing here. Thank you.
If anyone online, we'll take the person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Hello. Mayor Keely, city council, it's Bradley Snyder. I just, I want to refresh my objections to the constant development going on in downtown Santa Cruz, the constant overbuilt, overwrought, extra-large, extra-large capacity, very little parking, in some cases, fully low income, in some cases marginally, you know, marginal number of units or low income, many cases, in fact, probably most cases. One thing that that does is it squeezes, squeezes out the natural character of downtown Santa Cruz and because all those vehicles that can't park in those buildings and yet live there and feel entitled to park near there, you know, they're just, they're just, they're going, they're going every direction and squeezing out on the margins, squeezing out natural areas, habitat, interstitial space in the city. I don't think it's sustainable. I've objected many, many times. The county has a problem with people having a very difficult time getting approval, you know, permits for adding on, you know, proving their properties, even CZU fire victims. But the city seems to have no problem just building these giant ostrich egg developments. The media loves to, you know, make these almost AI-generated giant buildings and then, you know, it's appalling and shocking and then, you know, one that's less appalling and shocking, but still quite overwrought gets approved. That's how I feel about things. Thank you.
Afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor. Vice Mayor, council members, Gillian Greenside. In June, you, on your consent agenda, accepted the annual report from the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women. I was out of state, couldn't be at the meeting, but I submitted some concerns. I've only just been catching up on my list of things to do, so I watched that council meeting and I was disappointed to see that nobody asked a question that could have answered the concerns I raised, or at least addressed the concerns I raised. Then I remembered that you're supposed to ask questions of staff before the meeting, that was an early directive from the mayor, and maybe you got your answers, but the problem with that is the public doesn't get to hear what questions you asked nor the answers. So I then listened to the tape, it's just audio, of the commission meeting for August and September, at which the police chief said in answer to the concerns I raised, where does she get her statistics from? And the use of stranger, because my concern was the incidence of stranger rape in the city of Santa Cruz, is it similar to how it was 10 years ago? We don't know, because data's not being gathered. And the confusion from the chief was that the word stranger is vague and subjective. No, it's not. Everybody needs to read those two reports, the 050607, which is Joint Report for 2008, and 8910, which was released on the 2012. This is pooling ignorance. I would suggest, if I could just finish my sentence, just one sentence. I would suggest that there's a critical need for community safety for you to call a meeting of your safety committee, the police safety committee or the police committee.
Okay, now you're into a compound complex sentence.
I'm very sorry about that.
If you want to finish your simple sentence, that's fine. Thank you. Anyone else? We have anybody online, we'll take the person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Yes, thank you. As to the San Lorenzo Park redesign, I got the impression you are entertaining the possibility of turning the riverlands into some kind of riparian nature preserve and keeping people out except perhaps on raised pathways. I hope not, at least the restricting public access part, because you are stuffing 1,000, maybe more new residents just across the river with very little open space nearby except San Lorenzo Park. It doesn't have to be expensive to maintain or hardly maintain at all, but open space is necessary and scarce. The rest of the park is to be tightly crammed with amenities, which are great, but when occupied, nobody else can use them. Open space is different. There was also this disappointing idea of injecting wokeness displayed by the sneak amendment of indigenous people getting compensated to provide a cemented privilege of a paid something or other, perhaps in final park design, and to do so on all future projects. This reminds me of my one-sentence definition of woke, which is the making sacred of Lago historically marginalized race, gender and sexual identity groups, leading to the erroneous fantasy of a currently needed compensatory social justice. Neither the officially extinct Awazwas or the Anamutson trial ban are or are part of any of the 536 federally recognized tribes. Their status is no more than that of a private social group or country club with its own membership rules, but without the country club. The Anamutson have no minimum blood quantum percentage membership requirement, a drop of mission area lineage will do, including from far away. I suggest you research whether they were paid for anything into the native garden in the San Juan Patisac State Park or for anything about the Cotonaw Coasteries National Park project. DNA is not usually a pay qualifier for expertise in anything. And those historical plaques are fine, just leave out the usual white man, bad, woke, racial divisiveness, please. Thanks.
We have anyone else online? Okay. Anyone else in chambers wish to address us under oral communication? Saying, "Nearing none." We're on presiding officer announcements. Excuse me for just a second. Excuse me for just a second. Give me a second there. We're on mayoral proclamations. Item six is a mayoral proclamation declaring October 25th, excuse me, October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have a proclamation in that regard that Councilmember Trigaro will be presenting to Karen Madura, who is the Chair of the Commission on the Prevention of Violence Against Women. And I see Ms. Madura here in our council chambers. If you would come forward and Councilmember Trigaro, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for being with us, Chair Madura. I also want to recognize Commissioners Courtney Barrett and Commissioner Laura Booth, who's with us also. As a former Commissioner of CPVAW or CAPFA, depending on which you like for the acronym, I'm really proud to give this proclamation. I have worked with all of you and you guys were really supportive of my new data project when I was a Commissioner, looking beyond just police numbers, bringing in our nonprofits, bringing in the universities so we could have a better gaze at data and how that informs prevention. But each of you have been so active in the community, reaching out to young people at bars about safety, informing kids at tabling events. All of you have really shown up and leaned in into the effort. So thank you for being such great Commissioners. So the proclamation. Whereas each October, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month is recognized through educational events, community gatherings, support groups. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, nearly one in four women and nearly one in seven men in our country have suffered severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas domestic violence affects people of all genders, sexual orientations, ages, and racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious and economic groups. And whereas, there is a continuing need to provide education, awareness and understanding of domestic violence and its support services. And whereas, the city of Santa Cruz took formal action on September 8th, 1981, establishing the Commission for Prevention of Violence Against Women. And whereas, for 44 years now, the commission has worked to end domestic violence, sexual assault and sexual harassment in the city through prevention programs and public policy. And whereas, the commission has partnered with the city schools to empower young adults to make informed decisions, resist peer pressure and build healthy relationships. And whereas, the commission has partnered with local agencies such as Monarch Services, the Walnut Avenue Family and Women's Center, and the Diversity Center to support and amplify prevention programs and community-based strategies. And whereas, although progress has been made towards preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families, important work remains to be done. Now, therefore, I, Gabriela Trigaro, along with Mayor Fred Keely and my colleagues on council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 25th as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Santa Cruz and encourage all members of our community to participate in the activities during the month to raise awareness and to work together to prevent violence. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. It has been an honor for all of us to be part of this 44-year tradition and to volunteer our time and our unique perspectives to help keep putting awareness of domestic violence, sexual harassment and violence against women at the forefront of our city. As always, we invite all members of our community and of the public to come to our meetings, to bring forth any items that they want to be addressed in front of us and to allow us the time to have staff research and to do our own research. We know that this problem and these problems are indicative of larger problems of misogyny in our society and also they stem from generational cycles of violence. And we know that it takes a lot of time and a lot of hard work to end these, but we continue to fight and we thank the city so much for your support and your recognition. Thank you.
I also, oh. I also want to recognize in the room Gillian Greenside, who is a long-term Commissioner with CPVAW, and Julie Schneider, who is here, who is a victim advocate and absolute wonderful collaborator with the commission. Thank you.
Looks like we have one more speaker.
Oh, Courtney, yes. So Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you. I just wanted to, since we're here, mention that the national theme for the month for October for Domestic Violence Awareness is Heal, Hold and Center. And that also, what we're trying to do to bring awareness this month is, it's called Shine a Light. And we're turning Santa Cruz purple. Purple is the color for Domestic Violence Awareness. And we are asking businesses to put purple lights in their windows and just to show support. Also, the banner, I think, is going to be coming up soon and we're inviting everybody to wear their purple ribbons that we've been given. And just also on October 11th, it's called Free Yoga Day downtown on Pacific Avenue. And it is a large event that is supporting this important issue. So, and we will be there. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the great work. I will be stepping in as presiding officer for the remainder of the meeting, so I'll have that noted for the minutes. Our next item is item seven, which is mayoral proclamation declaring September 29th through October 5th as Week Without Driving Week. And I will go ahead and present this proclamation. The Metro, Santa Cruz Metro is the lead agency on this. They're not able to be here today because they are in Capitola hosting an event. So I have brief comments from the Metro Board Chair as well that I'll be reading. All right, so here are parts of the proclamation. Whereas access to mobility is a fundamental part of health and community connections, allowing city of Santa Cruz residents to reach education and employment opportunities, medical services, shopping, recreation and social opportunities. Whereas the city of Santa Cruz transportation system should support all individuals regardless of ability, age and/or income, which will strengthen our communities and enhance our quality of life. And whereas participating in a Week Without Driving challenge will bring greater awareness and understanding to leaders in the community about how the lack of adequate transportation can impact people's ability to work, travel to appointments, access education and childcare and obtain goods, services, recreation, entertainment in their communities. Now, therefore, I, Shabra Calentari Johnson, Vice Mayor of the city of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim the week of September 29th to October 5th, 2025, as Week Without Driving in the city of Santa Cruz and encourage all residents to use public transportation, walk, ride, bike or use ride-sharing options, including carpooling for their everyday travel needs. And here is a statement from the Metro Board Chair, Rebecca Downing. She says, "With this action, you raise awareness of the challenges faced by those in our community who cannot or do not drive. This demonstrates the value you place on active transportation in your city. Your leadership helps us reflect on the need for safe, dependable and accessible options for everyone traveling within Santa Cruz and the rest of our county. Thank you for your proclamation." And I will say, I accepted this challenge. We'll see if I last a week, but I did go on a ride with Claire Galogly from our Transportation Department yesterday and got to check out some of the amazing infrastructure work that's being done by our Public Works Department in District Three. And got a ride today by Councilmember Golda, so we'll see how long I can keep it up. My son is having wisdom teeth pulled out later this week, so I'll probably have to drive him, but trying my hardest there. So thank you guys for supporting Week Without Driving. All right, the next proclamation is, excuse me, the next item is item eight, and that is Fire Prevention Week. And we will have Chief Odie come up to present, please.
Vice Mayor, council. Hello, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. Fortunately for you, I will not be presenting today, but I will be, I will be introducing Tim Shields here again, just to, a reminder to everybody, we're just here to, in the, you know, in the wake of the 1871 Great Chicago Fire and due to a proclamation from, the presidential proclamation, we have Fire Prevention Week every October. This year, it will be starting on October 5th. And so Chief Shields will be presenting an important topic or theme. And of course, I just want to remind everybody that this theme is super important because it's not just, you know, granted, it is just a week, but we, these themes come up because they are extremely important and you'll see this year is no, is no different than years past. Last year, smoke detectors, they actually do save lives and this theme is no different. And so again, I just really want to draw your attention to this year's presentation and thank you guys for the opportunity. Without further ado, Chief Shields.
Chief Odie stole my thunder already. Gosh, that's like half my charts. Good afternoon, council, Vice Mayor, Tim Shields, Division Chief of Prevention and the Fire Marshal for the city of Santa Cruz Fire Department. And thank you for having me today. Bear with me, you're going to see me twice today, so you're going to get a lot of interaction with, see my face. Without further ado, in years past, I like to keep the theme hidden and then like spring it on you guys for like an exciting surprise, but I went ahead this year and just put it right on the title chart. So this year's theme is Charge Into Fire Safety. I don't come up with it, it's National Fire Protection Agency that does, so lithium-ion batteries in your home. As Chief Odie alluded to, Fire Prevention Week marks the great Chicago Fire, the anniversary that occurred on between October 8th and 9th of 1871. And we observe this annually on the Sunday through Saturday containing the 9th of October. So it's not just some random week, it's actually commemorating the actual date of the event. This year, October 5th through the 11th. And we're doing it beforehand, so you know, it felt the next council meeting's not until later and so it'd be kind of silly to have it after the fact. So we did it in September, but it'll be in the following week. Founded in 1922, established by the NFPA, again, National Fire Protection Association, to promote fire safety awareness. It was recognized first in 1925 by President Calvin Coolidge and last year marked 100 years, so we're at 101 years. And the picture is kind of fascinating, it's the map of the city of Chicago and all the areas that burned, approximately 17,000 structures burned during that fire. Again, this year's theme that I did not come up with, but Charge Into Fire Safety, lithium-ion batteries in your home. So it's very important and these, these three key topics that we preach regularly in terms of what to do, what to say, because everyone always asks me, well, what should I do with my e-bike, e-skateboard, whatever it might be? But if you stick to these three things, you're going to do a lot better than most people and in fact, this is, probably leads to more safer homes is, you know, everything we have these days contains a lithium-ion battery, it seems. First is to buy smart. You want to look at products that are listed by international or a national agency such as United Laboratories or the ETL listing. So make sure the product is listed. Look for that certification, you want to avoid counterfeit products. The second is to charge them safely. We don't want to keep them plugged in, we don't want to overcharge them, and we want to keep them from, away from heat sources. So it's very important to charge your devices safely. And of course, recycle. We don't want to throw these in the garbage. We've had several garbage truck fires that batteries have been thrown away in the garbage and they get compromised and then catch the garbage truck on fire. The city of Santa Cruz does take batteries, so at our landfill up in Dimeo, you can take your lithium-ion batteries for recycle. Obviously, there's a clear danger when we have damaged or overcharged batteries. They can quickly lead to thermal runaway in which batteries become to the point where it's difficult to extinguish. And I just want to point your attention to a couple of the photos within this slide. Two burned photos are two lithium-ion battery fires that we had within structures. The bottom one, it was an e-bike that was inside, purchased a not-listed battery, so an aftermarket battery that was put in, charged into it. It was under the escape stairwell, luckily. This occurred in the middle of the day, so no one was upstairs sleeping and there were no injuries, but the structure was a total loss. You can see the amount of damage and how quickly it spread. It went from smoke from the battery to a full confirmed structure within five minutes. And then the picture of the gentleman holding the battery in his hand is just what one cell looks like. So there's multiple cells, so if you have an e-bike or even electric vehicles, they have these in series. So there's many of these rechargeable batteries that are in series that are charged. So that was actually me investigating the fire. So you can see how the fire really damaged the structure, you can see all the way through, through the back slider. So that's all my slides I have. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Yes, that's Member Golda.
I do have one question, actually. Is there ever talk with our refuse department about having maybe like a battery collection day or days, similar to like when they do the Christmas trees or the oil collection?
Right. That's actually a really good idea. I haven't reached out to sanitation yet and that'd actually be a good thing to either have a battery collection within normal garbage collection days or an event that we can hold. That's a great idea.
Other questions? Comments?
Thank you for that information. I guess I was curious how it was being shared out, the information.
Of the Prevention Week?
Yes.
So we'll put it out on our social media. Again, it's not for another week, so it starts on the 5th, so this is coming up Sunday. So we'll put it out on our social media, on our website and get it out with our new PIO. So we'll make sure that it's blasted, as they say today, I guess.
And then is it also in Spanish?
Yes, we do. So if one of the diagrams has it in Spanish, they also have it in French.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Multilingual.
Great. Other questions or comments? Thank you so much. Thanks for the presentation and all the great work.
I'll see you guys in a bit.
Okay. Don't go too far. All right, we are on presiding officers' announcements and there are none. Any statements of disqualification? Councilmembers have any statements of disqualification for items on the agenda today? Okay, there are none. Any additions or deletions? There are none, no. Okay. City Attorney, report on closed session, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson and members of the city council. This afternoon, the council met at 12:00 PM in the courtyard conference room. There were five items of business discussed in the closed session. Item one was a conference with legal counsel concerning liability claims. Those are the claims of Elaine Williamson, David W. Turner, Abiba Deahem and Sabrina Schufelt. Those are also listed this afternoon on your consent calendar as agenda item number 18. Item two was a conference with legal counsel involving anticipated litigation, specifically considering initiation of litigation in two potential cases. On that item, the council, by a unanimous vote, authorized and directed the city attorney's office to intervene on behalf of the city in currently pending litigation. The names of the defendants and the, and the parties and the particulars will be available upon request to members of the public once that intervention has occurred. Item three was real property negotiations. The council met with and gave direction to its real property negotiator concerning the property at 1520 K Pacific Avenue. And Councilmember Brunner recused herself from that item due to a potential conflict of interest. Item four was a conference with labor negotiators concerning all bargaining groups, SEIU temps, SEIU service employees, mid-managers OE3, supervisors OE3, fire management, FIREIAFF, police management, the Peace Officers Association and executives. Council gave direction on that item. Item five was a public employment matter concerning the city attorney's office. There was no reportable action taken in the closed session today other than the initiation of litigation that I mentioned.
Thank you. We're moving on to item nine, which is the council meeting calendar. Any updates?
No updates, but I do want to remind the council and just let the public know if they're not aware, the October 14th meeting was canceled and that leaves October 28th as the only meeting in October. the October 14th meeting was canceled, and that leaves October 28th as the only meeting in October.
Great, thank you. All right, we are moving on to our consent agenda, which are Items 10 through 25. We will be taking comments from 10 through 25 at one time unless there is an item that's polled. And we'll take this up in one motion. So let me ask my council colleagues here if there are any comments, questions, or any items that need to be polled. And I'll start with Councilmember Trigaro.
None for me, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Brunner?
I just had a comment on Agenda Item 13.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. This is Arts Commission Appointment. The last Arts Commissioner that I appointed had to step down, and so this is a replacement appointment for Mercedes Lewis, who really wanted to be here but had a conflict, and sent just a brief email, not sure if it was received in time, but I just wanted to read that. "I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve on the City of Santa Cruz Arts Commission. At this pivotal moment for the arts, I hope to bring a perspective rooted in creative practice, community engagement, and advocacy for accessibility and equity in cultural programming. I look forward to contributing my experience and energy towards strengthening the role of the arts in shaping our city's identity. Thank you for this meaningful opportunity." Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Newsom? Councilmember Golda? Sure. Okay, I'll pull 15. Okay, and that is Item 15, Support Efforts To Strengthen Opposition To Offshore Oil Drilling. Okay? And let me mark that here. Councilmember O'Hara?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to pull 16. Resolution Authorizing The City Manager Or Designee To Grant Waivers To Tenants Of City Lease Agreements.
Okay. All right, so Items 15 and 16 have been polled. We'll go out to public comment for Items 10 through 25, excluding Items 15 and 16. Are there members of the public who'd like to speak on any of those consent items? Please step up.
People online?
So this is Items 10 through 25, excluding Items 15 and 16. You have two minutes. Three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kiki Lyne McKay, and I'm the Executive Director of the Santa Cruz Mountain Wine Growers Association. And I'm here to speak in support of forming the Santa Cruz Mountain Wine Business District. It's a program that allows wineries to pool market resources and promote a region as a wine destination. The district is widely supported by the wineries across the ABA and throughout the county. Every winery in the district becomes a stakeholder, ensuring that this is a protected, shared future, not benefiting just a few. I don't know if you'll, I'm sorry, no. But our ABA is home to over 95 small independent wineries in a space of 450,000 acres. We just have 1,500 acres planted and no central wine country hub. So coordinating marketing is essential. We spread over actually three counties. Promoting our ABA ensures our wines are recognized on retail shelves, featured in restaurants, and recognized by visitors. It supports our family-run wineries and the local economy. The district gives the wineries what they can't achieve alone, which is a united effort to tell our story, attract visitors who value authenticity, and support our businesses in the region. Other regions are forming districts and capturing attention, and we believe that we can benefit in the same way. This is an investment in the long-term vitality of our wine industry and our community. And with this support and collaboration, we can protect a legacy that's thrived in Santa Cruz since the 1860s. We are incumbencying 11 districts, and so far we have consent from nine. And we have two more to go. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. And we'll take who's online next, and then we'll go to you, sir. We've got someone online.
Okay, thanks. As Item 17, I don't see any reason whatsoever for the government to be involved in essentially a local wine advertising campaign that could easily be handled by a private organization of wineries wishing to be members of a private advertising group. The only reason I can think of is to force wineries who don't want to participate to have to participate. This is interference of government in a private sector enterprise business. It is a government-controlled collectivism and collect, they sure will, up to 2% of sales. And it doesn't seem so easy or fast to end the improvement district for individual companies who want to opt out, or if it is a failure. That 43% of wineries did not sign on to this petition expressing a favorable opinion is problematic. I also wonder is what the county government's cut is for managing this, or taxpayers pay? This is a large regional organization. I always oppose regional authorities as they are not fully elected by us here, and you wish to turn your vested authority over to them. This appears odious and it's fake democratic coercion. And if the county wants to promote local wines, forcing some businesses to participate against their will, it's a no for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Please, sir.
Hello, thank you for addressing this subject. My name is Gerald O'Brien. I've been a resident of Santa Cruz County for 51 years. I've been involved in the wine business for 50 years. I have a tasting room, a winery tasting room here in the city for 16 years. I'm sometimes considered the senior citizen or the old fart of the Santa Cruz wine industry. That industry covers all of the Santa Cruz mountain area, as Kiki has mentioned. Generally speaking, most business communities, most business communities form some sort of organization to promote their business activity. We have done that with the organization called the Santa Cruz Mountain Wine Growers Association, which we formed in approximately 1980. We promote the wines of the Santa Cruz mountains, all wines of the Santa Cruz mountains. Whether members, whether wineries are members of our association or not, we promote all wines of the Santa Cruz mountains. So everybody in the mountains, mountain district benefits from what this organization does, the Santa Cruz Mountain Wine Growers. This situation with the Wine Improvement District will approximately double the funds with which we can use to promote the wines of the Santa Cruz mountains, and that means all of them. So I just want to make sure that you folks understand this is a great leap forward for not just those who have voted for it, but for all of the wineries here. And whether they voted for it or not, it's going to promote everybody. And I strongly urge you to support this whole program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have someone online?
No.
Please step forward, thank you.
Thank you for addressing this. I'm Steve Stores with Stores Winery. We established our winery in the city limits in 1988 and still have a facility here in the city limits. I agree with everything that Gerald had said, just said. I do feel that it supports all wineries across the board. And I just, I want to say that I support it. I'm probably one of the ones that will be taxed the most by this. And I think it's actually just a 1% tax. Someone at the person online had mentioned 2%, but it's just a 1% tax. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Please step forward.
Thank you for your time. My name is Jim Cargill. I'm the President of the Wine Growers Association, as are a couple of the board members that came up and represented. Wine industry is about 8,000 years old, about 150, 160 years old or longer in Santa Cruz mountains. This is the next evolution in what we're doing. We produce world-class wines in the Santa Cruz mountains. The unfortunate thing is, the world does not know. This will help get us there. This is the next step in the evolution of that. And we have done the hard work. We have spent well over a year talking with all of the wineries, working with them. And as elected officials, I'll remind you that getting 100% is never going to be there. We respectfully agree to disagree with a few individuals, and sometimes we agree with them on points. However, this, a rising tide raises all ships. It will improve tourism, it will improve the economic vitality of Santa Cruz County, Santa Clara County, San Mateo County, and the ABA to really elevate that to new levels. So being that we've done this hard work, we've had these conversations, we've really presented the information, what we are asking you today for is permission or approval to try this experiment. It does sunset, and you know, within a number of years. And if it doesn't work, and we can all get together as a coalition, as an association, say it works or it doesn't. So we're trying this experiment, and that's what we're asking for today. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on consent items? Anyone online? Okay, the matter is back before council, and I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Brunner?
I move the consent agenda with the exceptions of Item 15 and 16, which have been pulled.
Great. All right, moved by Councilmember Brunner and seconded by Councilmember O'Hara. And we'll ask the city clerk to call, vote. Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely is absent. And that passes unanimously. We'll go to polled Item 15, and I'll pass it to Councilmember Golda.
Thank you. I pulled this just to make a couple edits to the proposed motion language. And I don't know if you would like me to just make that motion now?
Sure. Okay. So the only... Oh wait, you know what? We'll go to public comment first. Did you have any other?
No, it's just that...
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Are there questions or comments on Item 15? We'll see what the motion changes are when we hear from the public. Okay, we'll go out to the public for public comment.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson and council members. Thank you for considering this item. This is very important, given not only the world that we're in relative to offshore oil. As you know, President Joe Biden, at the end of his term, removed 625 million acres from consideration using his clear authority under the OCS Lands Act to do so. His successor basically undid that action, although he did not have the authority to do that. So next month, we are looking at, as early as next month I should say, we're looking at the possibility of geographic targets for offshore oil being listed, especially for California, West Coast, and our six National Marine Sanctuaries on the West Coast. Also, the threat of seabed mining is real. The president has signed an executive order directing Department of Interior to look at seabed mining within federal waters. There is actually a company that wants to do a pilot project in American Samoa, which is right next to our National Marine Sanctuary there. And also, interestingly, NOAA has been charged with permitting American companies from doing business in international waters, even though there's a UN treaty saying that you can't do that. So this is all relatively urgent. And I would just ask that, when you look at both the OCS Coordination Program and the Save Our Shores local government program, that when you look at the staff direction, that we look at urgency to do this quickly as well as doing the two phases that you described concurrently, because this is going to be at our doorstep relatively soon. Offshore oil and seabed mining is a couple of years off. But some of the work, for example, being done with the Santa Cruz offshore facilities ordinance will require updating that for seabed mining and the technologies that are involved there. So I'm available to answer any questions you have, and thank you for doing this, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Hifley. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, we'll take the person online.
Yeah, I'll talk again. As to Item 15, don't we pay lobbyists already to lobby Sacramento and Washington on legislative matters? Do we need more? Do we need special Wednesday, Tuesday agenda lobbyists? I don't believe I've ever seen an agenda item that states that will have a general fund impact, an ongoing financial commitment, and no budget adjustment, only to, in the next sentence, say the exact opposite about all three. Hey, no confusion there, huh? As far as finding a source of money to oppose offshore drilling, I sure hope it's not the Water Department signing the bay is full of water, close enough for government work. While environmental damage can negate the effects or the benefits of offshore drilling, did it ever dawn on you that many cities benefit hugely from oil revenue sharing agreements with the government? In the case of Long Beach, the state gets a 42.5% cut, and the city an 8.5% cut from operations, where Long Beach gets $50 million annually, although they are jealous of the relatively huge state share. Instead of costing $54,000, you could be making millions. I'm just saying, I don't actually carry the weight. Thanks.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, the matter is back before council.
So I would like to move Item 15 in the first... My motion is to support Santa Cruz commitments to oppose federal offshore oil drilling proposal by agreeing to join the local coordination effort and direct staff to return to city council within a month with a cooperative agreement or the equivalent that defines the scope of work terms and city involvement, and an agreement with Save Our Shores, and identify a funding source for the county requested Phase 1 contribution of $29,000, and the county requested Phase 2 contribution of $25,000. So the only real edits, I think it was sent to you, Bonnie, were to add that timeframe within a month, and the agreement with Save Our Shores.
Other? Second? Second by Councilmember Trigaro. Questions or comments? Councilmember Brunner?
Can you just explain a little bit the context behind your motion?
Well, I think the speaker spoke to the urgency of the matter. And so if we're going to take this stance, I think we should do so sooner than later. That's why I wanted to add the timeframe.
Other questions or comments? Did you want to answer Ms. Brunner's question? Go ahead.
Request to include seabed mining in the motion. Seabed mining.
Offshore?
Offshore drilling and seabed mining.
Will the maker of the motion add seabed mining?
City Attorney, I love to add things that the public's asking me to add. This is unusual.
Technically, if you want to take action on seabed mining, it's not identified on the agenda, so you would have to bring that back for further action at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. I'm not going to change.
Okay, we'll stay with the motion. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll take vote. Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson? Aye. Thank you. We'll move on to Item 16. Councilmember O'Hara?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I am in support of Item 16. I do think that there is some language that needs to be added to the motion to provide some clarification, but I'm happy to go to public comment before I make that motion.
Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on Item 16? Anyone online?
No one with their hand up, no.
Okay, we'll ring it back to council, and please go ahead and make your motion.
Thank you. So I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to grant waivers in an amount not to exceed $1,000 per fiscal year, per tenant, strike lowercase tenant, and include uppercase tenant of city lease agreements with an annual cap of $20,000.
Councilmember Trigaro, seconds. Questions or comments on these changes?
Let me just provide the argument for this.
Okay.
From my reading of this motion language, and this carries through the rest of the resolution, lowercase tenant can, in a lease agreement, mean multiple tenants. And I think it's important to ensure that we mean collectively uppercase tenant, which is typically what we would find in a lease agreement that is, can be one or more tenants in the way that it's currently drafted. The way I read it is it could be interpreted as $1,000 per tenant, which could include more than one, which is, you know, a greater fiscal burden for us. And then I also do think with the potential of 70 to 80 lease agreements, it makes sense for us to cap at what I'm seeing is about twice our estimated annual cost of $10,000. So making the recommendation to cap it at $20,000.
Questions or comments? Okay, we'll ask the city clerk to call the vote. Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely is absent. Great, that passes unanimously. That passes unanimously. We are moving on to, um, general business. And the first item there is item 26. And Andromos Salmonoid Habitat Conservation Plan Project. That's a mouthful. And we have Ms. Lukemback, Director of Water, who will present on this.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson. Members of the city council, Heidi Lukemback, your water director. Um, it is a mouthful and I'm going to try to use those words very sparingly today. Um, but I'm really excited to be here to talk about this series of events with you. It is a big milestone and not just for the Water Department, but I think for the city, for the community, and for the environment. Um, I'm joined here today by two members of our staff who have worked tirelessly. I think Chris Berry was here since day one, working on this project, and Zeke Bean. Um, so I have just a few slides and I'm going to focus less on the technical aspects of it. Your staff report, the attachments, all go through the, the history, the background, the relationship between federal and state permits, all of the data we collected over 20 years that support the actions that we're asking of you today. Um, again, we do have staff here that can answer some of those technical questions, but I really want to focus on why I think this is a big opportunity to celebrate. Um, so just a few moments to maybe talk about this in really basic terms, layperson's terms. Um, I do have to talk a little bit about our water system and the HCP in order to really understand the components, but we'll try to keep the jargon to a minimum. So when I was thinking about how to frame this item for us today, I was thinking about an item that I think came before the council at your last meeting. It was the San Lorenzo River Master Plan. And in listening to the staff presentation, the council engagement, the community engagement, it became really clear that we, all of us, really support, um, integrity with which we are working, living, playing in our environment. We have really high values for sustainability. We respect the fact that we are not the first people here. We're not the first habitat here. And it was really clear in that conversation that those are our values. And I think, um, it very much frames what we're going to be talking about today. So what are we talking about today? There's, um, several actions that we're asking of you. Um, but I, I've been, I've, I'm stuck on this analogy of the three-legged stool as it relates to these pieces. And of course, that analogy is that you can't have a functioning stool unless you have all three legs functioning together and well. And so the three legs of our stool here are the Anatomus Salmonoid Habitat Conservation Plan, Santa Cruz Water Rights Project, and Support for Water Supply Reliability. The, um, I'm going to abbreviate the first one so I don't have to say it over and over. The ASHCP, um, is a requirement that, um, directs, qualifies, constrains how the city operates our water system so that we can be protective of the fish. Um, the water rights are more or less the rules of engagement that direct how we can take and use water from our sources. And then, of course, supporting water supply reliability. You can't do any of these without the other. I want to step back just for a minute so that we can understand our current water system and what we're talking about when we're talking about these big changes. So our water system, as you know, dates back to the eight, late 1800s. And it's 100% local water supply, 94% surface water, and seasonally about 6% groundwater. Those sources, the flowing sources, and I think many of you have seen them, Laguna, Lydell, San Lorenzo River, are controlled by the state in some way, shape, or form through water rights. And those water rights, prior to the Water Rights Project, allowed us to take a certain amount of water at a certain rate and it directed where and how we could use that water. So they're pretty constrained in some ways, but in other ways, you can see here at the end, they lacked allocation to the habitat. So in some instances, we could take as much as we wanted to meet demand. And they also were very narrowly described in terms of where we could use the water. We have very prescribed places of its intended place of use. And so looking at, um, these pretty antiquated water rays and thinking in a modern way about being protective of the environment, we're obviously seeing that there's a disconnect that we had to address. So the first wrong, the first leg of our stool, um, is the Anatomus Salmonoid Habitat Conservation Plan. I even practice that a lot. Um, so what is an HCP? An HCP, again, is a requirement of a permit that is being protective of endangered and threatened species. In this case, the ASHCP is being protected, protective of, um, Coho salmon and steelhead trout, which we see, um, hopefully more and more throughout our flowing sources. What, what the HCP means to us is that we're required to leave water that we would otherwise divert for the community in the streams. And so while we're being protective of those habitats, we're using less, unless it's available to us for our community. And so when we were working on the HCP, we realized we can meet those commitments as a, as a city. But in order to do that, we need to gain flexibility around how we can use our water. And so we worked with the state and we've come to, um, agreement that we don't want more water. We don't want to take it, um, at a higher rate. We just want to be able to have more flexibility about who we share it with, allow us to store water underground for an aquifer storage and recovery project, for example, and allow us to share it with our neighboring water agencies. And our current water rights will allow us to do that with these modifications. And then the third, um, leg of the stool, of course, is supply reliability. So the HCP is removing water from the system or leaving it in our flowing sources. The water rights are giving us flexibility to do these sorts of projects. Um, we are pursuing, as you know, now, and we will be speaking with you more and more in the future about aquifer storage and recovery, so taking that surface water and putting it in the ground uh, for later use. We can also take that surface water and share it with our neighboring water agencies, SoCal Creek Water District and Scotts Valley Water District, um, so that during dry seasons, they can share it back to us. And this is all possible because of the relationships that we've built and I think the commitment that the council and the city has had over the last 20 years. Um, so we have an HCP in front of you that will be approved, hopefully, after this, today. Water right modifications that we will implement and then ongoing pursuit of our water supply reliability projects to meet our goals. I wanted to, um, I, I think for me, part of what's celebratory about this is this. Um, this is an effort that started in 2000, um, maybe even a little bit earlier. I'm sure Chris has the whole chronology in his head. Um, but what I'm sharing is, you know, 20 years of mayors and the city councils that supported that. Um, four, three and a half city managers. I'm not quite sure how to characterize Rosemary's role, although important. Um, and three water directors, excuse me. But of course, all of the staff beyond that. And it really, I think, exemplifies, again, the city's real commitment to initiating a body of work that's really going to have an impact to the community and carrying it on or through the, the decades, really. Collaboration, these are the, and I think there's more. These are the agencies, nonprofits, communities, schools, that we've worked with over the years. Um, I'm not sure if Mr. Berry has a compilation of the number of meetings and miles traveled to get to where we are today. I know some of the meetings were very contentious, but the fact of the matter is all these people were committed to the same objectives that we are, um, being protective of the environment, um, and having supply reliability for our community. We have, we operate under two other habitat conservation plans, which I won't share with you today. Um, but these are all the species that are embodied in our HCPs and that we're being protective of with, through our operation and maintenance. So we take this commitment very seriously, not only in our flowing sources, but more broadly in all the areas that we're responsible for and stewards of. And then finally, I think, just to summarize the commitments that I see city staff, you know, relentlessly over the decades and the city and the community really upholding. Um, these things aren't easy, as we've seen, but the values that we hold and that we share and that we have the legacy of, I think, are just really important and just demonstrate that we all recognize the great community we live in, the special community we live in, and our responsibility to be protective of it. So these are the actions that are in your staff report. Approve the ASHCP, accept the changes to the San Lorenzo watershed water rights, dedicate bypass flows for pre-1914 North Coast water rights, and authorize the city manager to sign related permits. And then on an ongoing basis, continue augmentation of the city's water supply projects to achieve water supply reliability. This is part of my celebration. This is as celebratory as an engineer can get, except for the fact that I, we've turned these into cookies. Um, and I have a cookie for you, if you would like, just to help us celebrate. And we're also planning an event that will hopefully attract the people that we saw on those previous slides. Just to, um, I hate to see these moments go by because we spend a lot of time, effort, and resources um, to further these commitments and we don't want to just gloss over them. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation and the 20-plus years of work. Um, let me see if councilmembers have questions or comments at this time. Councilmember Golda.
I just want to say thank you. I know this is something that I've wanted to see happening the whole time I've been on council and advocating for, so I appreciate, um, taking this into consideration and all the groundwork that went into the, um, underground storage facilities to add to the water that we need, but also protecting and preserving the water that the fish need. And I do think fishing is a valuable resource in terms of food for humans, but also an economic resource, um, if you think about fishing as an industry. So I'd be excited to see increased fishing in the San Lorenzo River moving forward. So I hope this is a start to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you and thank you, Heidi. Um, my comments really center on, you know, I've been in the seat for about a year, but have been part of the city for many years, you know, maybe a decade and a half. I see this as probably the most important thing that I am going to vote on in my tenure on council. Um, I personally know that Chris Berry probably has spent 50,000 hours. I mean, I'm just concerned, maybe 100,000, yeah, maybe more on this. If he's not up in our watershed or maybe surfing four mile or three mile, I'm not sure your preference. Um, I don't know if we have a class of employees that have been working so diligently on this type of comprehensive, multifaceted, multi-beneficial program in our city. Um, so between Chris and Zeke and the rest of your team, thank you. And thank you, Heidi, for providing your leadership and all the others that were, um, at the helm before you. Um, you know, I don't know if as council, we can even grasp the intricacies of how you got here, based on the staff report and the slides. I appreciate that you kept it at the high level of appreciation, you know, of celebration. Um, between droughts, designation of protected species, um, water supply studies, demand studies, I think the target has been moving every year for the last 20 years. And it's just amazing to me that you have kept going at this and we've gotten this far. So I just wanted to share my appreciation, um, obviously fully supportive of this. Chris, I'm not sure what you're going to be doing now, though. You know what I mean? Surfing a lot more, hopefully.
He has a 30-year permit in front of him that this is going to get him and he'll have to comply with it.
There you go.
We have him for a few more decades.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Councilmember Brunner.
Thank you. Just a quick, um, I appreciate the analogy of the three-legged stool. I think that's always a great visual and, um, echo the appreciation for the journey that has brought us to this moment. So thank you for all the work. Thank you for laying it out and, um, thank you to everyone that's been involved in this process. Um, the conservation, the reliability, it, it's just great work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to, um, the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, we've got someone online? Please.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is Garrett. In a state that dumps millions or billions of gallons of Sacramento fresh water into the bay, presumably for the benefit of a tiny smelt fish, while the Southern Valley farm ranch land goes bone dry and unemployed and hasn't built a water project in a zillion years, while cities and forests burn for lack of water, I question if the state isn't as eco-dumb as a fish ladder on matters of water. It seems strange to me, you approved hundreds of millions of dollars already for water projects, while it is only now disclosed that you don't have the permits for them. Uh, to me, this matter should have come up before full funding was discussed and approved. Seems fishy and backwards. There are hints of obligations with no estimates of new costs. You claim none to the general fund, which maybe is, of course, because that's the mostly sacred private fund reserved to pay your fat salaries and benefits. So I assume you will stick any new costs on the water, onto the water bill ratepayers, as usual, coercive slush fund style on top of the hundreds of millions already committed for water projects. Who's paying and how much to count salmon, clean fish ladders, move gravel? It's, uh, more classic, SC, approve funding first, tell us later what will happen, who pays, and it really costs. It appears this is partly about losing water rights by limiting water intake to protect salmon and dilute the water rights additionally to service new users, both of which logically reduce the water available to the real current water right holders, the citizens of Santa Cruz. Water rights are like a goldmine and it seems long-held rights are being given away for nothing. While water basin recharging stores very expensive water, which potentially could increase available water sometimes, the math has not been clearly provided here at all as to whether net-net, this is more or less surface water available to city residents compared to the current operations in both dry and wet years. Where is the comparison? Um, it seems like an important question to ask, but you probably won't because let's face it, you don't have any choice. It's the 11th hour to object to anything. You just have to go for it. Uh, similar to the line in The Untouchables where Sean Connery asks, "So, do you feel better or worse?" I would ask, are the citizens of Santa Cruz going to feel better off or worse when this is approved? While this item doesn't address plans for recycled wastewater, I would point out strangely, it seems the people are left to drink very expensive recycled sewer water and their fishes get the, the cheap, clean surface water. I hope the salmonoids have agreed to take the limit, to take limits, and I wonder, uh, what happens if the fish don't cooperate? Hopefully, you will be moonshot jacking outside water rates to ensure they pay their share and more of the new infrastructure, while we are told to conserve and tear out lawns. But, uh, that would be swimming upstream, to expect that. Uh, on a more constructive note, I, at Lake Sonoma, I don't know if you've been there, the public is allowed to view the fish counting, uh, part of the dam's fish ladder through a glass window and they see each fish as they get counted and passed through. And it's really interesting and an educational public feature, possibility you might want to consider.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Erin McCarthy. I'm water re-
Oh, looks like we lost you. One moment. All right, you're good to go. Sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Erin McCarthy, Water Resource Planner in County of Santa Cruz, Environmental Health Water Resource Program. The Santa Cruz County Water Resources Program strongly supports adoption of the Anatomus Salmonoid Habitat Conservation Plan and the associated changes to water rights, permits, and its other components. City staff collabor- collaborated closely with regulatory agencies, county staff, and other partners throughout the development of the HCP. It provides a path for the city to continue to provide essential and reliable water supplies to our communities while also protecting and restoring essential habitat for our local populations of steelhead and cohoo salmon. The HCP is the result of many years of hard work and dedication. We acknowledge and commend staff at the Water Department in achieving this importance- We acknowledge and commend staff at the Water Department in achieving this important milestone, and we look forward to working together to support implementation of the HCP.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, anyone else out in the audience? Okay, the matter is back before the council. Look for a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
All right, Councilmember Triguero, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember O'Hara. Any other comments or questions before we take a vote? I'll just say again, thank you so much. These have got to be the cutest cookies I have ever seen, and I took two so each one of my boys would get them, and they wouldn't fight over it. Thank you. We'll take the vote. Oh, did you have any final comments?
I just want to request, Chris Berry would request.
Oh, please.
Photo op in the spirit of celebration with the Vice Mayor, if that would be okay.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll take the vote, and then we'll take a photo, and, and thank you, Mr. Berry, for all your work. Councilmember Triguero.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Golda.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Keely Zapsin. That passes unanimously. All right, we'll do the photo. Where would you, just right there? Or it would, yeah, okay. Wanted all of us?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, either way.
Do you want to look here?
Yeah.
Just here, yeah.
Stand.
I don't know.
Take you a photo.
Hey, you two get the middle.
Do you have a photographer? Do you need one?
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Sorry, I butchered the title.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Our cushion pole. All right. It's great to have this celebratory moments after decades of work, so thank you again. All right, we are on item 27, and that is the ordinance extending temporary use of certain adjacent public streets and outdoor areas. And we have Ms. Unit from Economic Development present.
Good afternoon, Rebecca Unit, Economic Development Manager. So the item for you today is an extension of our temporary ordinance to allow outdoor dining on private property. This was first established during COVID, and in the last year, we were able to create a more streamlined approach to outdoor dining in light of some of the impacts of the Murray Street Bridge retrofit project, as well as sort of ongoing economic impacts. We are bringing forward a recommendation to extend our temporary permits through July 1st of 2029. This would bring us to a year after the bridge reopening, and so that's my brief presentation, and welcome any questions.
Any questions at this time from council members? Okay, we'll go to public comment. Yes, please. Ms. Madura.
Hi, my name is Karen Madura, and I'm the owner of Brady's Yacht Club in Seabright. I wanted to thank our Economic Development and our city council for working on this and for bringing this forward. As we have discussed, it is so important to have as much help as we can for the Seabright businesses with the impact from the Murray Street Bridge closure. If possible, I would ask for even more time. I, of course, we are all hoping that the bridge is going to be completed on time, but the worry, of course, is that it will not be completed in the timeline that they have given us. And also, I want to remind council that for the businesses that do have any savings, we're going to be using it to survive these three years, and then we'll have to ideally fill up our coffers again to be able to pay for the costs associated with these patios. So that's just my ask to extend it even further if you could to 2030, or even 2031 would be ideal. Beyond that, though, I really just want to thank you for acting swiftly to put this on the agenda. Not only is it going to help the five businesses in Seabright that need it, but there's 21 other businesses that, in good faith, were able to survive COVID and work with the city, and it's just fantastic to have that for everyone. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? Anyone else here who wishes to speak on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to council. Let's see if there's a motion first, and then what about a question?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Did you want to open on your motion, then we'll go to the question? Okay, we'll go to your question.
Sorry, I just wanted to respond to the public comment and ask if there was any consideration for extension, if there's any challenges or opportunities that we need to understand about that.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember O'Hara. I believe the extension is aligned with the anticipated project completion timeline. If for whatever reason the project does end up extended beyond the time horizon that we have included in the staff report, we can certainly bring something back to the council at a future date to consider an extension of the outdoor dining, if that works.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Brunner.
Based on that comment, I'm wondering if we can just set a timeframe of maybe six months before expiration to not wait until it expires and bring it back, but to give some lead time to allow for this planning for the businesses and if it needs to be brought back.
Thank you for that comment, Councilmember Brunner. If we anticipate that the project will extend beyond our current planning horizon, we will certainly bring something back to the council with ample time to provide, to provide an extension without interruption.
Thank you so much.
So no further amendments? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and I think we'll go for a vote. Councilmember Triguero.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Golda.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Keely Zapsin. Right, that passes unanimously. We are on item number 28, and that is the City Wildfire Resiliency Plan.
I'm back. Council, thank you for having me back. This is something near and dear to my heart, is the wildfire resiliency plan. Today, we're not seeking any approval or guidance. This is more of a presentation for you and all the hard work we've put in over the last, well, five years plus, and I want to give you a little bit of background. I'm going to introduce our consultant, Steve Otten with Otten Resource Consulting, to give the presentation on what the resiliency plan is and what it means for the city and the future of wildfire resiliency within our open spaces. I also have Mike Gottsi from Parks and Chris Berry from Water here, and it was a collaborative effort. We already gave this presentation to the Public Safety Committee, so they've kind of already had a preview. So this is really born out of the CZU fire five years ago, where we were scrambling to secure our critical resources from the incoming fire. Luckily, we were able to identify all the water facilities and sites that we needed to protect and did some emergency vegetation management. Through the years, we looked back and said, well, what do we need to do to protect our resources? And we really need to create a plan to protect our critical infrastructure. Luckily, about a year and a half ago, we received a grant through CAL FIRE and CAL FIRE Foundation to create a resiliency plan to identify all our open spaces and our critical water infrastructure and city infrastructure. It goes beyond city limits. It also goes into the counties, such as the Newell Creek Watershed, Liddell Springs. So there are water resources outside the city. We held, we conducted a RFP, and we selected Otten Resource Consulting to create our resiliency plan, which was a collaborative effort between fire, water, parks, and public works to really create a holistic plan that not only looked at protecting our resources from fire, but also forest health and a long-term outlook on our open spaces. And so without further ado, I want to introduce Steve Otten from Otten Resource Consulting, and he's going to go through a set of slides that I think really kind of puts the cherry on top of this, this effort that we've finally completed, and I just feel so happy to have this document in place, and then this is really a roadmap for our future. So, you?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Steve Otten, owner of ARC Forestry and a registered professional forester, and it's great to be here with all of you today. It was a lot of work to get to this point, and we definitely don't do that without a team. And so I wanted to identify Lindsay Jaspers here, who did a ton of work on this project, led the field efforts and the document development. So a huge thanks to Lindsay. Thanks for being here. I've given this presentation a couple times, and I think the last one was a little bit longer, so we're going to do it a little bit quicker this time. So, but I wanted to make sure everybody got the details around it, that really wanted to hear about it, so thanks for that patience. Six topics to cover for the wildfire resilience planning update. A little bit about just the work in the Santa Cruz Mountains that's going on. What is the wildfire resilience plan, or WRP, and who is involved? Something about our priority treatment zones that were ultimately selected for treatment, the permits that are being developed, and just a quick shot of some of the treatment activities that could be utilized through some of the permits, and a little bit more about the funding and collaboration. Next slide, please. I have the clicker. Is this the clicker? Okay, thank you. Excellent. Okay, so there's a lot of work going on in the Santa Cruz Mountains following the CZU lightning event, right? And I just kind of put this up there just so that we don't all necessarily feel the weight of it, that we're on our own and that we're by ourselves, because climates aren't changing. There are high vegetation densities out there, and there's an increased fire frequency. And so these are a lot of the entities that we work with and that are definitely moving forward with making changes to how they do work in the woods. And most notably on the left is the Forest Management Strategy that's now publicly available for state parks covering 25,000 acres in the Santa Cruz County. And then UCSE is also working on their wildfire vegetation management plan and permitting. And I put them up there because they're your neighbors and kind of there for a reason. Next slide. And so what is the WRP and who is involved? Well, it's really a guide to support the implementation of wildfire risk reduction strategy, noticing the red lettering, to prioritize strategic treatment recommendations, and really designed to integrate with several COSC-led planning initiatives and documents. But it's really a collaborative effort involving City of Santa Cruz Fire, Parks and Recreation, Mike Gottsi who's here today, and the water folks, and I did see Chris Berry and Zeke and folks from our Public Works Department to really create a technical working group to evaluate all the different types of treatment strategies and permitting and how things look, and where's everybody else going. So it was a really interesting period of time. Next slide. And what was ultimately identified, if you look at the map in the center first, is the De La Vega Park was one of the top priorities, of course, for its emergency operations center, multiple water department sites and pump stations. Water is very important, as we're hearing from Heidi and Chris and Zeke. And the POGONIP Open Space Preserve. And I just want to identify that amongst these priority treatment zones, one through four, overall cost for initial treatments is probably somewhere between a half a million and $1.2 million. And, and the range is because, you know, if you're treating with handwork, using chainsaws and chippers, that's a lot more expensive than maybe mechanized treatments, but sometimes sensitive resources are involved, and you need those kinds of protections, too. And the other one under the video screen is to consider an annual wildfire budget and just noting that some private land ownerships of similar acreages, you know, they've developed budgets for about $500,000 a year for treatments, retreatments, equipment, staffing, maintenance of permits, monitoring. So just not saying that's what you need to do, but that that's out there in some of the considerations. Next slide. So just to get a little bit closer on the priority treatment zones, the center map takes a portion of De La Vega Park, and on the left side of that center photo gives an idea of the amount of ignitions that have occurred there historically. But this treatment project is really about the Emergency Operations Center, 911 Emergency Operations, serving Santa Cruz, San Benito County, and about 300,000 people that it serves. So super important, right? And then the number two side is the water tanks and pump stations, and then the POGONIP that you can see, too. And that, we've been utilizing the governor's suspension, which is under the Wildfire Resilience Task Force, to allow SEQA permitting to occur on the Emergency Operations Center right now, and two more governor's suspensions will be filed in the next 30 days that Lindsay is working on. Thank you, Lindsay. And that'll ultimately permit the treatment of all priority treatment zones, one through four. Okay, so we got the permits. What do we do next? Next slide. And there's also the long-term permitting, because the governor's suspensions are, you know, right now saying that they'll be extended for usage up to five years, but we still have to think long-term about meeting the requirements in the California Environmental Quality Act. And so you guys have a history of doing well and working with the Coastal Conservancy, and so they've agreed to fund a, it's a California Vegetation Treatment Program permit that's also a statewide permit, that they're going to fund for you guys, which is super amazing to create SEQA compliance for all of City of Santa Cruz lands. Next slide. And just to give you an idea, that really the treatment activities that this permitting, really the governor's suspension and the SEQA permitting will allow a range of manual treatments, where stuff that we see every day, where people are cutting material, grabbing it, taking to chippers. Also mechanized treatments, where they're using equipment to grind up material, chip material, and then also prescribed herbivory, which might be having goats on hillsides, some level of herbicide work, and prescribed fire as some potential opportunities for bringing fire back to the landscape. And this is a picture of Butino State Park. The right photo shows a hardwood stand with some redwoods in it that hadn't had fire in a very long time, and there's a young Doug first stand. This area went through the CZU fire, and so state parks did a bunch of work to manually cut some of the smaller trees down, use some mechanized equipment, and then they utilized prescribed fire. And so the photo on the left shows the result of those treatments just a year after. Next slide. And so we kind of have this, we have the overarching of like, what is the WRP? Who's doing what? What's the permitting side of it? And, and then there's also the funding and collaboration side. So if we go back to the number one priority, that's the Emergency Operations Center. There's a wildfire prevention grant that has been applied for and submitted, and we'll probably hear in two or three months about that. So it's got permitting, working on funding, and then working with the Resource Conservation District of Santa Cruz County. On the left photo for the POGONIP, City of Santa Cruz was a part of a forest health grant where they were awarded 55 acres of treatment. And that's ultimately kind of, it's a little hard to see on the map, but there's sort of a smaller horseshoe of yellow to green and kind of brown tones around lots of red dots, which were former ignitions, or previous ignitions from 2019 to 24. So that would be the initial treatments are funded. And, and really, when you think about, when you look at the landscape of where De La Vega is and POGONIP, and UC Santa Cruz and state parks, it starts forming kind of like a horseshoe of its own around the northwest side of Santa Cruz. So if you could go back up one slide, and another slide, and if you look down at the bottom of the map, you guys can see the shape of De La Vega. And then if you move over, well, it's my left, you can see where POGONIP is, and then next left to that is UCSE, and the next left to that is Wilder Ranch, and then Moore Creek is to the south, and you can see how the CZU fire moved in. So part of the collaborative mentality is to start grouping projects, landscape-level projects, to consider moving forward on a multitude of different funding efforts out there, whether it's CAL FIRE or the Coastal Conservancy, but really Prop IV funding, and then, of course, you guys have Measure Q funding that's also played a role in some level of match for the wildfire prevention grant. Next couple slides, and there we are, to questions.
Thank you so much. Are there questions from council members at this time? No questions? Okay.
I would like to say that the resiliency plan itself, all 187, 184 pages, is posted on the Fire Department website. If you guys want some light reading, if you guys have trouble sleeping at night, maybe bring it up to peruse at your, your leisure.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let me see if there are comments from the public.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. I haven't looked into this.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. I haven't looked into this in depth, but, so just listening to the presentation, have a question. I noticed in one slide referenced eucalyptus removal. I remember the previous fire chief, probably in this context, talking about, these days, we don't focus on a particular species for removal. So if somebody from the team could perhaps respond, what is the plan for eucalyptus removal? And is any of this subject to oversight for habitat issues?
Will we tell public comment is done and then perhaps the council member will ask that question?
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public? Anyone online? Okay, I'll come back for a motion.
I don't think we have a motion.
Oh, this is just a presentation. Right? Yes.
Yeah.
This is just a presentation. Well, we'll come back for additional comments and questions and I'll go ahead and ask Ms. Greenside's question. Is there a plan for eucalyptus removal?
I'll have Steve come up and answer that, but, you know, we don't, we don't specifically single out a species for removal, but we defer to the expert.
I, that slide pointed out eucalyptus specifically because it can be really expensive to treat. And so it was kind of part of that slide where the costs are really, where I was talking about that the priority treatments were so much money and whether it was manual or mechanized or sometimes eucalyptus. But it's a really tough balancing act, eucalyptus. You think about monarchs on the coastal species side and that the amount of nesting that actually occurs in eucalyptus. So it's a tough issue, but we are not unfamiliar with working with groups like Xerxes Society to develop treatments that can occur certainly in places where monarchs might be inhabited or working around different SEQA requirements for nesting bird surveys to determine who's inhabiting these areas. So they're tough decisions. They're site-specific and there's not a one-size-fits-all. And I would say that there are a part of the consideration of often a multi-species evaluation of the system to come up with a appropriate and reasonable and SEQA-compliant prescription to move forward for treatment implementation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone, any questions or comments? Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you. Just a brief comment. Councilmember Triguero and Councilmember Golda and myself are on a wildfire preparedness ad hoc committee. And I just want to share my appreciation to the Fire Department, to our consulting team. This does prepare us to really effectively protect our infrastructure and it is part of what we're finding on this ad hoc committee, a multitude of efforts that are underway to ensure that our community is prepared for wildfire. Not only our own infrastructure, but we are, you know, just at the beginning of developing a process to and a plan to really increase our community's awareness about what we are working on, but how they can get involved. So I just wanted to pinpoint this one study and plan is part of a comprehensive, really structural framework for wildfire resiliency and preparedness. So I just wanted to put that into context and share my appreciation again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. All right, with that, we appreciate the presentation and all the work. Thank you so much. And there are no other items on our agenda, is that correct? Okay, so with that, I will adjourn our September 30th meeting. Okay, thank you.
You're out in time for volleyball.
I, I'm going to go get a walk-in and then-
Yeah, exactly.